Audience participation is next. Let me remind everybody, please step to the microphone, sign in. Please state your name and address, or the clerk can have it for the minutes. Council Rule 21 does limit each speaker to five minutes and each subject to fifteen. And even though my official timekeeper, Mr. Trutwell, is absent, that will be enforced. Thank you. Any audience, any member of the audience wish to address council? Please step forward.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone here in this room tonight for their service to the community. I'm here to speak about the clandestine drugs.
Joe, you need your name and address for John.
My name's Joseph T. Sharp, 559 North High Street. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have known that.
That's right.
A few times before. Still a little nervous. Well, I'm here to address the clandestine drug labs. First, I would question the need for this law. And what I mean by that is, I've asked the police department, I've asked the law director's office, and I heard the radio even ask the council members, how many drug, meth drug labs have there been in Chillicothe in the past two years? And I haven't got an exact number. Pat just said earlier that there was twenty, I think you said twenty raids, Captain Van Field said, drug raids in the county. I don't know if that's meth labs. We don't know if those meth labs are in houses, cars, backpacks. How many meth labs have there been in Chillicothe that we have to give this kind of attention to? I'm aware of, I believe, five, I think. I'm not sure of that, and we don't have those numbers. And of those meth labs, two of those meth labs, the one guy got caught in one house, and then a week later, he was involved in the second meth lab. So, that's just an interesting point I thought. Second of all, if we don't know the number of these meth labs, to decide at what number and at what point does it become necessary for us to enact this legislation, how many injuries? How many first responders have been injured from this, from these meth labs? How many injuries to people on the scene? How many injuries to the folks that have rented the houses afterwards? You know, that would be some good information to base whether we need this, whether this is necessary or not. I passed out some paperwork, I'm sorry about that, Nancy, I didn't realize Pat passed out the identical paperwork, the meth lab cleanup. And I have a couple of extras, if anybody in the audience would like some of these. There's some pretty good points in there. Another point I would make is, I pay taxes. I pay taxes for the police and fire to respond. And that's what they do on the drug raid. They show up and they respond. Then they, they do what's necessary to apprehend the criminal there. So I don't know why I should be paying, paying twice for that service. That's like saying, well, if you go to Kmart, and you, if the police respond to Kmart for a shot left there, then Kmart should pay you because that police officer had to respond there. He had to drive there, and he had to spend many hours there. Maybe we should look into more, more fees, and let's make it fair for everyone. If, if anything, the landlord shouldn't have to pay. If you are going to pass this, the landlord shouldn't have to pay, the tenant's the criminal. The tenant's the one who perpetrated the act and had to do that. He should pay. And I understand, Nancy and Pat, what you're saying about we need to be responsible with our finances. I agree. And I understand when you say you don't want the city, the city shouldn't have to clean my rental property. I agree. I don't want the city cleaning my rental property. I can do it very fine myself, thank you very much. And I can do it cheaper. And part of that is, on saving the money, when the police respond and the fire department respond, there's different types of meth labs. When, when you hear meth lab, the average citizen who hasn't, hasn't been to your meetings thinks beakers and bugs and burners and, and white jackets and explosive barrels of drugs. We don't know if that's the type of meth lab problem we've had in Chillicothe or not. Of course, we don't know how many meth labs we've had. I believe the ones we've had are the shake and bakes. Those are water bottles like you all have. They put a little bit of chemicals in there. It's dangerous. And they add that battery acid in there. That could catch fire, or it could blow up. When I say blow up, you're talking a little bottle like that, it might blow their finger off, could put their eye out, the person that's handling it at that time. That is dangerous. But these aren't fifty-five gallon drums that are going to blow up the city block, they're not going to blow up a house. Now, that's not every, I understand that's not every meth lab raid, but I don't know which type we're having. I would argue if the police are going to come in and the fire, is that the type of lab they found? What's the rate to be charged for that type of cleanup? The only time that bottle's dangerous is when you're shaking it. Release the pressure. Shake it, release the pressure. The police can come, the fire can come, make their drug raid. If there's just a plastic bottle like that brewing, put your safety gear on, release the pressure, arrest the criminal, leave all that toxic crap there. You don't have to clean that up. That's the landlord's job to clean that up. And that's kind of what they do. There's another difference between cleaning up and neutralizing. When they first respond, they're not cleaning up. We're not paying anyone. The, the fire and police aren't cleaning our houses. They're neutralizing the crime scene. They're anything, any active ingredients, they're removing all the active ingredients that could be combined to make a meth lab, taking it outside and neutralizing it. That, that's the difference. So, we're not paying them to clean, we're paying them to neutralize it.
Do you have a minute?
If you look at this paper, you'll see on there, indoor air in most homes, especially those with cigarette smokers, will usually exceed the health-based minimum risk standards. So, if, if you guys make me have my house tested, my, my tenant's house, if there's smokers there, I'm not going to pass the air test because simply of smoke. And I encourage everyone to read this because there's a lot of, a lot of good points in there. And I guess my final thing I'd like to say, a byproduct that you may not be aware of of this law, is you're telling the landlord, if you rent to someone, and there's a, a lab there, they're going to charge you five thousand dollars just for showing up. Well, then that tells me, and you say all the time, you should do a better job of screening. So you're saying, screen, if you've ever been arrested for drugs, I'm not renting to you. I shouldn't rent to you because you've been arrested for drugs. You, you're, you're an addict. If, in that case, then your daughter shouldn't live there, she's on drugs. And if, if that's the case, if you're telling the landlord, if everyone had to pay three to five thousand dollars every time they show up, first thing I'm going to say is, whoa, if you've got a drug record, a criminal record of any kind, I'm not going to rent to you. Now, that could, that could spread, and is that what we want? I know in an ideal, in an ideal world, there would be no drug addicts in our community. But there are folks, and I, I would dare to say, somebody else besides me in this audience has a family member who has a drug addiction problem. So, that's a byproduct you might not be realizing. And when the landlord don't get to go and say, first thing they ask is, do you have a drug record? Have you ever been arrested for drugs? Whether you've been rehabilitated, or done your time, or went through rehab, I'm not going to rent to you because I'm not going to risk being charged five thousand dollars when the police and fire show up because they have to carry chemicals out into the street. I don't want our officers carrying chemicals out to the street. I, I can take care of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any other members of the audience wish to address council?
My name's Karen Hoffman, and I'm the president of APSME Local 1562, which represents city employees. I would like to address tonight the issue of the transit administrative clerk and the transportation coordinator. I've expressed my concerns about these jobs on a number of occasions, and I just want to go on record once again. I had expressed during civil service meetings that these jobs should be classified positions within the APSME bargaining unit. They're working side by side, other members there who are bargaining unit members, they're doing work that is similar in scope, which has always sort of been the litmus test for whether or not a job would be considered a bargaining unit job. The transportation coordinator, in my opinion, is, is nothing more than, than clerical in scope. There, I, I, it's, the job descriptions are, are sort of convoluted. They speak of supervisory skills and shift leaders. They, the shift leaders do most of what I believe the transportation coordinator, some of those duties, and our shift leaders, which are supervisory, are still in the bargaining unit. The positions are not positions of trust, they're not fiduciary positions. The administrative clerk states that it is a classified, non-bargaining management position and shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor. Those terms just contradict each other greatly. There cannot be classified service that serves at the pleasure of the mayor. Classified service would indicate that there has to be a competitive way to decide who gets that job. Serving at the pleasure of the mayor is an appointed position. I think it has to be one or the other. The job description for both of these lists, that the person, that, that it would be, I don't know if this is required, but beneficial for both to have social services degrees, and clearly, they're both clerical or administrative. The clerk is, in the hierarchy of administrative jobs, is what I would consider the ground floor. We currently have a secretarial position there, which is the payroll person, the accounts payable person, that deals with all of the, the really, the information regarding employees. I, the, the term, it eludes me, but I, you know what I'm saying? The, the, the term that, dealing with people's social security numbers and all of those things. She is a secretary. That's kind of the top rung of the clerical positions within our bargaining unit. That position is in our bargaining unit. So for a clerk, which is an entry-level position, to not be in the bargaining unit just seems a little backwards to me. And again, I believe that that, that sentence, there's just a, a lot of concerns. And I would like to ask that you not waive the three-read rule tonight because I really believe that there are things that need to be cleaned up. I have received calls from my members because they want to apply for this job, and the way it currently stands, that's not going to happen. So, having said that, please consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
Hello, I'm back again. My name's Jake McNeely. I live at Seven Bell Crescent. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the condition of a lot of poor houses in Chillicothe, Ohio. And this pertains a lot to the different wards. I'm not picking on anybody in particular because in future councilman, uh, meetings, I'll be addressing different properties in Chillicothe. The first one is that I'd like to address is that 605 Allen Avenue. It's a burned-out dump. All you have to do is go down and pile it out, maybe you can't mess it. It's been a dump for months. Now, it's all burned out, trash laying everywhere. I'd like to know what the status of that is. Does anybody know what's being done with it?
Dozens of board has sent notice to the property. That's as much as I can do right now.
We're not taking legal action, have it taken down?
Yeah, yeah, that's law director.
Law director, do you have an answer there?
No, I don't.
I think somebody will take a look at that. And if I drive by it, you'll see what I'm talking about. The reason I ask about that is, I own a piece of property nine houses away from there. My house is in Akron. I don't want that dump down the street. Next one, 523 Bellevue Avenue. Sorry, Mr. Sherman, but this one's yours. Three years ago, this council passed for a person to build a pole barn in the house on this property, right behind Bishop's Loggia. Not all of here, I mean, there's some new people here who didn't vote on this, but there is people here who voted on this. If you go by this property today, the pole barn's not done. I said in this council meeting, it was promised that the house and pole barn would be done in one year. The purpose of the pole barn before the house was, was to make trim for the house. Right now, the pole barn's not done, but it's full of campers, junk, old cars, trash sitting around. In the house, they dug a basement, now it's a fraud pond, it's full of water. Health hazard, safety hazard, let some kid don't fall in there, open adult one. We need to look into that property. I think the law director ought to file a lawsuit and say, either finish the house in one year as promised, but then the next six months, finish this property, or you got to tear it down. They came and asked you to do this, they said they did do it in one year, it's been over three years and nothing's happened. It's time to make a move on that property. The other thing is, I want to touch a little bit on the landlord issue, since I am a landlord. I'd like to know, what is the police's role in this ordinance? Is there anything in the ordinance that says the police is going to be involved to do anything? And the reason I get into this is, let me point out, I own a property that I just recently bought at 793 Adams Avenue, right next door at 805. The woman that owns that property is in Westmoreland. She knows nothing. I feel sorry for her, I know her personally. She owns the property. We've got five drug dealers in the house. Police drive up and down the street. There's needles everywhere. If you want to send the police down there to pick up the needles, you might as well let them sit there all day. I'm tired of the needles. I'm working on this house, I'm tired of the needles. Something needs to be done at this 805. Like I say, the woman, she's the property owner. If they make some meth in there or something, what are you going to do to her? Go to her and say, you got to clean up the property? She's just going to sit there and look at you, because she don't know you. She don't know nothing. I feel sorry for her, especially with this ordinance. Believe me, I'm not against drugs. I think we ought to eliminate them all. My idea is a little bit different. Yours, I think we ought to do what they do in Malaysia, take the hand off, take this and the next, and then a foot, and then a foot, but that's my opinion. But, this 805 sentence needs to be done. I've turned into the city about the electric falling off the house. You can close that house down right now, but the engineering department, which you reported it to, will go down there and tag that house. They have to leave that house because it's unsafe. Nothing happened. They stole my electric meter during the snowstorm. You can see their footprints, I followed them. I stood out in the alley and seen the footprints right through the back door. Called the police. What did I get? Got a tag-on dispatcher that says, sir, you're not allowed to call 911. I said, somebody's stealing my electric. Don't you understand? They plugged my electric meter in theirs, take theirs out, they got free electric. What do you mean, I can't call 911? Well, you got to call this private number. I said, I don't have a phone book with me. I said, what do you do then? Let them steal my electric, and I pay the bill? So they send the policeman down. He goes over, knocks on the door, and they said, oh, we didn't steal your electric meter. So he comes back, tells me this, and I said, what are you going to do? You know it's there, you can see the footprints. He said, well, I'd have to get a search warrant, I don't want to go through all that. So what good's the police? I reported it, they didn't do nothing. Now, the strange part is, ten minutes later, they knock on my door, said, oh, here's your electric meter. We want to make sure we're good neighbors with you. We don't want you turning us into the police. Can you believe that? I got it back, thank God, but it was because they didn't want me to report it to the police. But here's a poor woman, who knows nothing, and you're going to go after her. That ordinance's got some flaws. I'm not saying it's perfect, I'm not saying it's not. The other part is, if you've ever been in small claims court, three, four months to throw people out. I've been there, I was just there last week, and the thing is, if it's three, four months, is the court's going to get along with this ordinance and give me forty-eight hours? If I make a dumb mistake and get the wrong person in there, is that court going to get me to the right to throw everybody out of that house in forty-eight hours? As it is now, it's three, four months. Is that fair with this ordinance? I don't think so. Like I say, there's some flaws, there's some good parts. But you got to think about that. If I can't get them out in forty-eight hours, and I got to put up with them for four months, that's not fair. That's the only thing I got to say. See you again about some houses. Need to work on the ones I told you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Any other audience, any members of the audience wish to address council?
My name is Whitey Coates, 460 Summit Drive. I'm here to represent this Chillicothe Tree Commission. We sort of fly under the radar, we do a lot of work, we get sweaty, we dig holes, we plant trees, we prune, we balm, we weed. And some of these things affect the community aesthetically and some financially, and we wanted to see, we wanted you to see who we were face to face. I brought some with me. I'm a for, I have a forestry background. Mike Gals is on the tree commission, he has a forestry background. Dave Penner is our new director of parks and recreation. He has a different background, different perspective. I'm sure he's going to be of real value to us. Ann Bonner is the urban forester for this section of Ohio. She covers sixteen counties. She's our mother hen, she tells us what's good and what's bad, keeps us on the straight and narrow. Gary McFadden is a self-taught forester, a naturalist, and a very hard worker. And Mike Green is the services director. He's the keys to the kingdom. He has the manpower, he has the priest faith, he has the augur, he hopefully has the money, and without him, we can't do a whole office. Seven of us are, are appointed by the mayor, we serve alternate terms. The tree ordinance is complicated, it's a very good one, needs a little tweaking. I'll give you three quick statements about the tree ordinance. Number one, trees on the city's land and the city's parks belong to the city. They're property of the city, and it's the city's responsibility to take care of them. The trees on the right-of-way in the city are the property of the city. The responsibility for the care is the homeowner. There's a big tree on a right-of-way, it, it's taken down, it costs six hundred dollars. The homeowner writes the check for six hundred dollars, goes into his house muttering under his breath. There's an element of unfairness there, and it's bad PR. The third thing that's important in the tree commission is the permit system. The homeowner cannot plant a tree, prune a tree, remove a tree without the permission of the tree commission. That gives the city the control over the future of the urban forest. This is how the permit system works. There's an issue with a tree. It's in a front yard, not sure if it's on a right-of-way, not sure if it's off the right-of-way. So the homeowner or his tree care person calls the service department. This is the name, this is the address, and this is the phone number, this is the issue with that tree. A form is filled out, the tree commission is called. Two of us, we work in teams of two on a rotating basis, two of us go to the address, measure the street, measure the tree. If it's off the right-of-way, the issue is done, it's not our jurisdiction. If it's on the right-of-way, we talk to the homeowner, we get their side of the story, we give them our side of the story. We're advocates for the tree. We approve or we deny the permit. Trees have flowers, they have leaves, they have fruit, they all drop, they all make litter. Leaves and the eaves and bird droppings on your car just as you're going to Sunday school are not valid reasons for taking down the tree. We are advocates for the tree. The Emerald Ash Borer, switching gears here, is a real problem in the United States. Michigan and Ohio have lost millions of trees to the ash borer. How does that affect Chillicothe? Well, there's fifty ash trees in Yount Canyon Park. Last spring, we took down thirteen of them. No cost to the, to the city because of one of our tree commission members and AEP and Aspen Tree Pruning. There are thirty-five more trees to, to come down. Of the ones we took down, we were paid eight hundred dollars by Gladfeller, we used that to buy four trees to put on University Drive. Look at Water Street, Second Street, Main Street, there's fifty more ash trees. They're all going to die, they're all going to have to come down. We prioritized how we think they should come down. We'll be glad to, to be there when they're taken down, give what help we can. If the city crews can take them down, it should be done before the sap rises because that's easier. If the city cannot handle the trees, they're twelve to sixteen inches in diameter, then you'll have to contract them to get them out. The first four trees we take out are on West Second Street by the parking lot. There's two trees there, two across the street. There's two at Carl's Townhouse. There's a tree in front of the LCNB bank that is an actual disgrace to Mother Nature, and there's a tree at Huntington Bank that needs to come on down. There could be some serious expenses involved there. We have a nursery on Rennick Avenue. We, if we buy a street tree to put in the ground, it costs a hundred and eighty to two hundred dollars. It has to have a certain size, a certain height, and a certain diameter, because if you put in small trees and the kids get into a sword fight with the tree, the tree loses and the, and the tree is shot. So you, so we buy trees. We have a nursery, you can buy trees for sixty dollars, you can grow them in the nursery for a few years and put those out on the street, and you save quite a bit of money. We're about to restock the nursery this year. We have some money in a budget, first time in fifteen years, and some of the money will go to restocking the nursery. University Drive, there are sixty-four trees on University Drive, there's thirty-two on either side of the street. They're matched across the street, they're all still matched from the top to the bottom. So it's crab tree, crab tree, walnut, cherry, whatever. Over the years, some of them have been vandalized, some of them have died, the crab apples are not very hearty. We're in the process of redoing those trees to restore that symmetry in the sixty-four trees. South Hickory Street, from Seventh to Eighth Street, there's room for thirty trees. They have wide tree lawns. This, in November, we put in ten trees from our nursery, mostly small trees under the wires. The rest of the street has no wires, tall trees for tall spaces. We're going to buy twenty trees and put them in hopefully this spring. Inventorying street trees. In the East End, there are eight hundred and forty places on the right-of-way that will take a tree. There are already one hundred and seventy-two trees there. Six hundred spaces could be planted, planted with trees. They're not all prime spaces, they won't all take tall trees. If you think trees don't make a difference, take a walk down Caldwell Avenue on a hot summer morning, drive down to the, the East End, pick any presidential street, and walk that street, see if you can see if there's a difference. We're inventorying the whole city, it will take several years. Eventually, we'll know what all the trees are in the city, if there's a, a problem with trees. We'll know where the planting spaces are when we want to add to the canopy of the, of the city. The Millennium Grove, I don't know if you know about the Millennium Grove at all. I wouldn't know where it was, and I wouldn't have been there if I hadn't been working on it for thirteen years. It's by the Chevrolet Place to the river. It's seven acres, it was donated to us. It has a hundred trees of historic background, they were donated to us. Each tree has a six-by-six, six-foot post, they were donated to us. Each tree has a five-by-seven plate on it identifying the tree. My favorite is one that says, Red Bud, Surcis Cannonensis, eighteen thirty-eight, Trail of Tears, four thousand Cherokee Indians died being pushed to Oklahoma by General Winfield Scott. The trees are divided into seven groups. These are important to Ohio, American history, Civil War North, Civil War South, presidents, famous men, famous women. You may not know that, you should learn something every day, and, and I will teach you this. Today is the hundred and seventy-eighth anniversary of either the first or second day of the Siege of the Alamo. It depends on which history book you read. Two brothers from the East End of Chillicothe from a farm were killed at the Alamo. We have a tree whose ancestor is at the Alamo, and then we have a hundred such trees as that. We need some work done at the Millennium Grove, some of the signage needs to be replaced, a couple of trees need to be replaced. Eventually, there should be a kiosk there so that people can pick up literature, you can take a self-guided tour of the whole hundred and some trees, it'll take you about a mile. The trees are identified by post, so once you know where the first tree is in history, you know, you can stand there, read the plate, and then you can go, it shows you where number two, three, four of them are. It's a self-guided tour place. Eventually, it should be used for teaching students and tourists about little snippets of history. We have some literature we developed. We'll leave you some literature that's a little more detailed than, than some of the other. We need a kiosk, we need a shelter, a small shelter attached to that, so that people can get in and out of the sun and the rain. There's a place for picnic area, we need a larger shelter there where people can have a union, et cetera, et cetera. Just a little bit about a, a history of one of the trees. We try to write the history so that people will learn something they wouldn't ordinarily have known. Uh, for instance, we have a tree that is a sycamore tree, it's grown from seeds that went to the moon and came back. The, the tree we dedicated to Neil Armstrong. When Neil Armstrong was six, he told his parents he wanted to be a pilot. When he was sixteen, he got his pilot's license, when he was seventeen, the Navy sent him to Purdue as an able R O T C guy. When he was twenty, they pulled him out of college, put him on an aircraft carrier, he flew six- sixty-eight missions over Korea and got shot down. I bet you did not know that Neil Armstrong got shot down over Korea. Anyway, all our histories are like that. Eventually, we want to plant, um, if, if you, if you go south on Bridge Street and you turn at Granny's Restaurant, uh you're on E seven, in the first half-clock, there's room for thirty-seven tall trees. Can you imagine that? Can you imagine what that would look like if you drove down there and saw all those trees? Um, East Water Street, you know where Watt Street is, and you know where T S work drive is? Forty-nine tall trees can be put in there, there's a few, there's a couple of wires, so those couple of trees wouldn't be that tall. But can you imagine what that would look like if it was there? Look at all the presidential streets. Can you imagine what they would look like with trees there? Not easily to plant there, because there's fences there, uh, the houses are close to the road and things like that. But there's a lot that can be done with trees. We pledged to plant a hundred trees this spring, uh, in the East End, uh, we don't have a dime for that, so um, we need some private funds, and we need a grant or something of that sort. So now you know more than practically anybody in Chillicothe, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I thank the members of the Tree Commission for, for your service, it does do the community a great deal uh of good. And I think I was on council when we wrote the original ordinance, it was quite detailed, so again, thank the Commission for their, for their service, volunteer service to our community. Any members of the audience wish to address counsel? Going once.
My name's John Stevens, I live five twenty-two Seminole Road. And I just wanted to comment on some of the cleanup efforts on the snow. Point one, we would not have had near the problems if leaves had been picked up in the fall, like we showed here. Then to top everything off, for the first time in memory, we had a bobcat up there cleaning out storm drains. They hadn't cleared the street till here come the service department and plowed them all back in again. They need to coordinate and get the cart before the horse. It, it was just a terrible waste of money and effort. If that bobcat had been doing something else, or they'd have plowed the street first, if they were going to, then put the bobcat in. At one time, almost the whole week, I was the only one that could get out of my driveway on the block. And that's only because I run my snow blower up and down the cutters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any other members of the audience wish to address counsel? Okay, going once, going twice. Old business, any council members, uh, have any old business they would like to discuss? Ms. Gray?
Just a couple of very, very brief things, just wanna say thank you to the mayor and the department heads for submitting their annual reports digitally, electronically, saved a few trees. And I wanna say thank you for being able to get that out to us on a timely basis. Also, wanted to give kudos, Chillicothe Firefighters I A F F Local Three Hundred, for the second-hand fire part of the fall, it was eight and eight, nice event.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Any other members of council have any old business they would like to discuss? Moving forward, additions and correspondence, Mr. Burke?
Uh, Mr. President, I did receive another uh of these notices of developments. This one is a, a development on uh at, or the project address is at nine sixty Toledo Street and Columbus Street within the city. It's a thirty-two unit uh multifamily hu- housing development. And this notice is from Quentin Court of Walbuck, Walbuck Development Company out of Lightsfield, Kentucky. And uh notifies the members of council of this development and of your right to submit comments or objections. Secondly, I did receive uh another notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, and this one pertains to the issuance of a permit to Cardo's Family Fund Center Incorporated of One Nancy Wilson Way within the city. That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any council members have any new business which they would like to discuss? Ms. Gray?
Just very, very quickly, just to announce the Colonna State of Day Breakfast this coming Saturday, March first, at eight-thirty a.m. at the Trinity United Methodist Church. Invite everyone to attend.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ames?
Thank you. I received a letter of thanks from Brenda Phillips, Associate Dean at Ohio University Chillicothe. O U C has an emergency response training center that has fallen into disrepair, and Dr. Phillips is pursuing a grant to refurbish and restore the Z R T C, so that in the future, it can be used as a community resource for first responders, including fire and police for drug remediation training and by industry. I drafted the letter on behalf of the Meth Lab Committee, which was signed by all four members in support of this grant. Dr. Phillips stated that once restored, it should serve as an important resource for increasing safety in our neighborhoods, workplaces, and broader community. And that Dr. Phillips appreciated the letter and willingness to partner with O U C for community safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ames. Any other new business, Mr. Bonner?
Uh, thank you, President Reinhardt, unfortunately, a few things to bring up here, I know we're going long, but still, this is our job.
Thought you could pay the big bucks for it.
That's right. Mi- mi- Ms. Patrick was uh nice enough to point out to me there, a- after I made the talk on Parks and Rec. Uh, March first is Statehood Day. When we made that date, tentative date, we knew that it was Statehood Day, this is no way trying to be disrespectful to the state of Ohio and the events that could take place. Uh, the way this winter and upcoming spring's going, uh, we just thought if it's a good day, we have to take advantage of it, because we don't know how many Saturdays that we're gonna be able to work on these fields. And the first games are April seventeenth. So, if you put it off, and it's a nice day, Saturday, May first, or March first, who knows when the next nice, nice Saturday may be? So, I was not trying to be disrespectful, and we were cognizant of uh Statehood Day, but just thought, if the weather's good, we kinda have to take advantage of that. Uh, secondly, uh, listening to Ms. Hoffman speak there, very good points. Is there a reason why these uh positions aren't in the collective bargaining unit?
Uh, when they, we had the uh R L S study done, they were not set up to be in the bargaining unit. There are some things that the uh, the transit clerk uh deals with, um, grant applications through O D O. Uh, that work is somewhat confidential in nature. There are budgetary items and, and future planning that uh, that is, could be considered confidential information. As we discussed in a self-service meeting, the transportation coordinator is a contract job. And it was a decision made jointly at that time between, um, you know, Ms. Hoffman and, and, and myself at the, at the, at that meeting, that uh, it wouldn't make sense for that to be a union position. So I don't know what the turn of events is today, but uh, we'll discuss it and, and work it out.
Uh, well, then if there is more discussion to go, then I, I take it we won't waive the three-rede rule of minds that was brought up.
It's council's decision.
So, so I hope, since there is gonna be more discussion with the mayor, hopefully we will not uh waive the three-rede rule of mind, giving us all a chance to get a little bit more facts on these issues. And finally, the, the, the list, uh, could be old business, could be new business, is kind, kind of the point that I'm bringing up. Uh, sometimes you don't know old or new business, but a lot of times, it is old and new business. And we seem to be doing a lot of old and new business in the uh committee reports. We're kinda getting a little bit ahead of ourselves and out of order. I'm not gonna, you know, point out anything specifically, but it's, you know, to me, it's fairly obvious that a lot of things in committee reports are really old and new business, and I'd kinda like to get us on that track to doing committee, you know, committee reports to deal through committee, old and new business to deal with, old and new business. Thank you.
Any other new business?
Just like to respond to uh those three civil service commissions. I thought we were good to go on, to be honest. We've had lots of discussion about it, and...
We've had three meetings, if I may, for the Human Resources Committee. And questions have been asked and answered, and we've discussed the possibility of deferring this because of some unreadiness. But by the same token, we are required as policy to reflect what's already been passed and approved in the budget. These positions, as Autumn Difini has already pointed out, have been approved and were part of the budget incoming forward into two thousand fourteen. Council was merely doing its job with regard to moving forward with the request, questions were asked and answered in the committee. I did see all of council members in those meetings when questions were discussed, brought up. And we knew prior to today that we need to do this. Because there seems to be some unreadiness, I can defer the one you are to hold off on having the three-rede rule. We do need to make this, this is already February, by the time we come back, it will be March. And ending the third quarter, I mean, first quarter of this year. We need to get this taken care of, the budget's already been approved, we need to have it resolved, because we've got monetary, financial issues that we're now getting into, that need to be addressed. And I don't want to get us into more, any difficulty, then we all be all in.
Thank you for that explanation, Ms. Gray. Any other new business?
If I, one more, one more point. One of the things that I, I did mention this, if I'm not mistaken, during the course of the last H R committee meeting regarding these positions. Again, this is a policy issue that we need to make sure that the legislation reflects the budget. If there are any remaining administrative issues, that's in the mayor's court. That's something that the mayor has to take care of with regard to job descriptions, classified versus unclassified. Any of those issues need to be addressed by him with H R, that's not the purview of council.
Thank you. Any other new business, Ms. Ames?
Um, along the same lines, um, as part of the H R committee, along with Mrs. Patrick and Mrs. Gray, part of our responsibility is to give input and find out what was going on with the civil service positions. At our request, the meeting was changed to a time when we could all meet, which was held last week. And at the meeting, we requested a time that we could all meet, and the Civil Service Commission said that they had always met at another time, and they would continue meeting at this time, which is effectively locking two out of the three human resource people out of attending the meetings. So I would just like to publicly say that I'm disappointed in their unwillingness to make the meeting available for us to attend.
Thank you. Any other new business? Okay. Committee assignments and meeting date, uh, like a couple of links for you guys, sound like the shit they're here with, got uh, kinda got caught up. But uh, since our last legislative meeting on uh, uh, February the tenth, uh, my office has made three um, committee assignments. Fourteen dash thirty-eight to the Development Committee, a request for legislation supporting the C R A tax exemption for the Cardile Building, I think that is item number nineteen this evening. Item thirty-nine to the Engineering Committee, a request for council to investigate the city's participation in modifying the five-way intersection located near North Plaza Boulevard and Nancy Wilson Way. And fourteen dash forty, the Engineering Committee, a request for legislation amending ordinance fifty dash seventy-four in section three thirty-one point forty-one of the city's codified ordinances, which prohibits through traffic on, through gas slash service station parking lots. And that was all we had.